Yeah, go for it. Hello, today is October 8th, 2024, and I will be calling to order the Madison Common Council Executive Committee meeting. So, welcome, everyone. On that note, Karen, could you please call the roll?
President Figaro Cole here. Vice President Duncan.
Here.
Alder Govender Rajan. Alder Conklin. Alder Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Alder Uguere. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Alder Curry. Alder Cur-- I see Alder Curry in the-- in the room. Oh.
Conklin, Miss Buck.
Conklin. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Curry?
Here.
Thank you very much. You have quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So, do we have any discussions about the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do I need-- can I get a second, please? Any questions? Any changes to the minutes? Okay, so is there-- um, seeing no objections, we will record an unanimous vote in favor of the minutes of the last, last CCC meeting. Karen, do we have public comment?
We have no registrants currently.
Okay. So now we go ahead and move to disclosures and recusals. This is a time for anybody that need-- any members of the body should make any required disclosures, recusers under the CDATX code. Are there any disclosures or recusals? Okay, I don't see any hands. We'll go ahead and move on. So, give me one second. The first item on the agenda is Legistar 85583, State of Wisconsin Request to Install Cameras on Existing City Poles Around Capitol Square on State Property. Can I please get a motion?
Motion to approve.
We don't need a motion because it's a discussion item. So for that, it's actually a discussion item. We don't need a motion for this. We are not approving really anything. We're just getting information. It's an informational item. And for that, we have, um, I'm not sure who's going to present. We have Yang here and someone on the Zoom. Yeah? Okay. Do you need to chair anything? Okay, perfect. So you go ahead. Have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, President, and good afternoon, everyone. So we, you know, as a city, were approached by the State of Wisconsin to install some cameras on city-owned traffic light poles around the square. So, so this request came from Capitol Police. So they are planning to install four cameras around our square on their property. So if you know the Capitol Square, that, you know, inside of the square, around the Capitol, are all state property. So we do have, you know, a few traffic signals, traffic lights around the square. And, you know, all the internal ones, those are actually on the state property, you know, benefiting, you know, the state traffic, of course. So, that's a request. And, um, you know, just, you know, some kind of background regarding some past practice. So we do have one camera already installed by state on the city-owned traffic poles. And so this was what done many years ago. So for that one, you know, we have been working with the state on that. Operation-wise, we haven't seen any issues. So the new ones, the cameras will be owned, installed, and maintained by the state. But they will need to get the electricity, you know, from the traffic signal cabinet. And we'll be, you know, developing a MOU to alternate responsibilities and, you know, charging them appropriately to recover city cost. And these cameras are not owned by the city. You know, state is not acting as a contractor of the city. And the cameras will be on the, on the state property. So it's not up subject to the city's surveillance ordinance. So at this point, you know, after discussing with other agencies, city agencies involved, such as Information Technology Police Department, as, you know, they may benefit from these cameras as well. And also consulting with the city attorney's office. So really, that, the state already have this plan. And if we say no to them, they will go ahead to do it anyways. But they're going to install it, you know, on their own property with a different pole, as to our pole. So it's going to create a lot of a cluster. And it's not going to be very visually pleasing. You're also going to, you know, waste quite a bit of, you know, public resources, whether it's, you know, that's the, you know, city or the state. You know, it's all a public resource. So with those in mind, again, after consulting with the attorney's office, staff intends to move forward, you know, work with the state, allow them to put a camera on the, on the city, city poles. Again, it's located on state property. So that's kind of a short summary of the, of the, of the situation. And, you know, here for, and would advise that, you know, this can be handled by a MOU between, you know, city staff and the state staff. So we don't need any approval from this body. But we want, definitely want to make this common council executive committee be informed. And we can answer any questions you may have. I also have my colleague, David Hanson, attending remotely, that, you know, has been working with the state on the request. And, you know, he'll be available to answer any questions. But before that, I'm wondering, Dave, you have anything to add? That I missed?
Thank you, Yang. No, I think you pretty much covered everything that the memo summarized. You know, the, I think maybe just to add a little bit, you know, obviously, the, the state was concerned about national, international events, you know, so that's their primary reason, you know, coming up into the general election, you know, all the way through inauguration. I know that was something that, you know, when we had asked them the why and what they wanted to do, that was definitely stated. You know, obviously, my contribution to the discussion has been more on the technical end, seeing how I oversee the, the street lighting and the traffic signals for the city. So, you know, obviously, I had my few questions on, on some things about, you know, energy and installation and everything. And they satisfactorily answered any of those questions. And seeing how we already have one up, you know, it'd be of a similar installation. There's a camera on one of our signal poles at Hamilton and Pinckney on the inside of the square. And as Yang had mentioned, that that's all state grounds and property. And actually, our signals are on, on the state property, is how that is actually arranged. But that would probably be all I have to add. I mean, other than, you know, their, their permanent installations like the other. And, you know, that they do want to get moving on this, you know, as soon as possible. And just wanted to make everyone aware of that. And, you know, at least from an engineering perspective, we don't really have any concerns about it. As, you know, their electricians would be doing the installation. So we're not putting any sort of staff resources on our end, other than probably just opening up a cabinet so that they can run wire into it, grab power. And as Yang had mentioned, our intention is to administer, or administrate this MOU with the Capitol Police or the state in this situation. I believe they're under the direction of the DOA. And, you know, in essence, just be very clear that they're responsible for the maintenance. You know, most likely ask for at least some sort of minimal cost. And we don't expect any significant power draw on any of these cameras. And then, of course, obviously, liability if something would happen with it, you know, if a camera would fall or something off of one of these poles, that, you know, the city would not be liable for any damages or injuries that would be caused by, by the cameras. So that's about all I have. And, yeah, I'll take any questions, and I'm sure Yang would as well.
Thank you, David and Yang. Are there any questions from the body? District 19, so Alder Uguere?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Tang and David. I think you may have partially answered this question. If there were to be any damage to the city-owned poles or lighting in the process of installation or future maintenance, who would be responsible for that?
Thank you, Alder. That's a great question. So if that's the case, we'll, we'll make sure the state would be responsible. So as we work on, you know, up tonight, if we don't hear, you know, major concern from this body, we'll start to draft MOU with the help from attorney's office with the state. So we'll make sure we outline those responsibilities and make sure we make it clear. So that's a very good point. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govender Rajan. Please, and I will be here.
Thank you. Do we know whether the state cameras would be using facial recognition at all?
That's a great question, Alder. Yeah, so I actually don't know, you know, how they're going to use a camera. But I think David has been having some conversation with, with Capitol Police staff. So David, do you have any idea on that?
No, I, they have not given any specifics on the camera models or anything like that. There was just, I guess, one photo that they had shared of a sample camera, which looked to me like a Flock camera. That's a name brand. So that's a very common camera that's, that's used in the industry. But other than that, that's all the information that they provided.
Okay. And since it's on state property, they can do whatever they want with the cameras, and we don't really have jurisdiction, correct?
That is correct. However, though, they probably have their own, you know, policies or state laws that they have to follow. So I'm sure there, you know, some kind of restrictions that they have to follow on their own, but nothing can be imposed on the, you know, from a city side.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other questions? I don't see any hands, but I do have a question. So when it comes to the memorandum of understanding, will that include language on regards to MPD or city transit, any other agency on the city to have access to footage on the, on these cameras?
Thank you. Yeah. So that's our intent. Yeah, you know, we do think, you know, it's a good idea to share resources. So, yeah, we do want to discuss with them to see whether, you know, the, you know, to extend the possible, right? You know, they may have different, different systems than the city camera system. Whether, you know, that access can be, you know, granted for, you know, other use, city, city, many city use. Maybe especially for, you know, law enforcement collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the body? This is not an item that we wrote on. It's just informational. But if any other questions, Alder Curry? You can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Is there, there's no one from MPD chambers, is there?
No.
Okay. I had like a logistical question, just wanting to know more about like how they work together and was thinking if someone from MPD was there to ask a question about how camera access was granted or challenges during the 2020 incidents on the Capitol. But I'll follow up.
Thank you, Alder. With no other questions on the queue, thank you both of you for coming. I really, we really appreciate it. And we will move on to the next item. On the agenda, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we'll incorporate all the inputs into the MOU. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is-- Let me see from me. I got it. It's, um, item 83517, the Alder Budget Engagement Events Presentation. And I'll pass that on to, to staff to, to proceed with that one.
Thank you very much. Before I hand the mic over to our legislative analyst, I would like to say a couple of words of thanks to our legislative analysts and also our intern. We had an aspire intern this summer, and she's back in, as a, just a volunteer this, this fall. And the two of them have put in many, many hours to take all of the information that we gathered during the five budget engagement events, which was very, a lot of, a lot of information. Distill it, transcribe it, categorize it, analyze it, and then find a way to articulate it. I'm very, I just wanted to give them a pretty big shout out here. I also, I think we might talk about it a little bit later, but I also really want to give a shout out to all the Alders and all of the city staff who helped us. Those events, we had over 30 city staff volunteer to assist us at those events. And I just wanted to recognize them publicly as well. And also, I want to say thank you to the rest of the council office staff for being agile and rising to the occasion. So with that, I'm going to hand the mic over to Isaac, and I'll be in charge of slides.
Perfect. Thanks, Karen. And yeah, I want to reiterate, especially the thanks to Hannah, our intern. She was a huge help in this, in this project. So Karen, you have the slides? Perfect. So yeah, today, our office finished the 2025 Budget Engagement Events final report. It is 130 pages and just over 30,000 words. It was a big lift, and we hope you all find time to read it or go over it in some capacity. And so Karen, can you do a slide? And so today, I'll present a bit on what we did with the report and give you a bit of an introduction. Go through the data we had. Talk about the total budget engagement events, which is just one section of the report. Some of the key takeaways we had, and then things that we want you to consider as we walk away from the report. So slide, and you can do one more after that also. And so we are all familiar with the events. We had five different events. We had one for the east side, west side, the south side, near west side, central/downtown, and the north side. And at these events, our typical structure was we had an introduction. We had Finance Director Schmidicki give a presentation on the budget outlook. Had a session where people wrote down questions, their note cards that we could answer them. Had small group discussion sessions and a debrief and a thank you. Karen, if you can hit the next slide, that'd be great. And so kind of going into the data that we had, we were able to collect data on attendance numbers as well as the number of people that registered on Eventbrite. Because we had people write down the questions on note cards, we were able to transcribe it and get a sense of what people were wondering about, both during, before, and after the presentation we gave. And during the small group discussions, we had people write down notes on large sheets of paper that we were able to transcribe and then later sort and analyze. And if you can hit the next slide, there's a couple of things that we want people to keep in mind when reading this report is that this is not a representative sample. This is not a scientific study. I think this one, one quote from someone at the event really sums it up pretty well, is, which is, who aren't we hearing from? How do the demographics of these meetings align or not with the demographics of the city? So there's this significant response bias. The people that show up to these meetings are a bit different than the rest of the city of Madison. There's also this kind of significant human error in, in analyzing this. Some people's handwriting is very bad, which made it very difficult to read and then transcribe. There's a lot of work in deciphering the intent of people. They often would write down just one word, and you don't really know if they're saying, "The service is great," or "The service is awful." We don't know what they're saying by just saying one word. And then there's also the effort of categorization. There's many submissions from different, different people that could have fit in one category or another that we'll kind of get into later. And so ultimately, should be used as a tool in decision-making rather than this definitive last word on the residents of Madison's views on the budget. So if you can go to the next slide, and then one more after that. And so we can start going through the total kind of aggregate data that we have across all five budget events, starting with attendance in the report. You'll be able to look at these graphs in much larger form as well as some write-up. But here it is sorted based on, based on the district with the largest, smallest turnout to the largest, as well as the total registrants and total attendees. We had 490 people register on Eventbrite, and 346 across the five, five events show up. And so the next slide. When looking at the note card questions and comments, these were things that people wanted answers, answers to, either at the event, or they would provide an email address for us to follow up. I think we followed up with well over 100, 200 questions over the past couple of months. And so on these, we had 542 either questions or comments. Outside of kind of catch-all categories, like miscellaneous questions or comments, the most common type of questions were ones regarding the operating budget. So very specifics about like how large the deficit is, how much we spend on a specific program, other things kind of along that area. And then following that was government accountability or staff or departments pay. And so there's a lot of questions about what we do to evaluate programs or departments and how we're spending money. Also lots of questions about kind of staff pay increases over the past year or two. And then lastly, there is many, many questions about the capital budget or other one-time funds. And this is a phenomenon that we noticed and we'll talk about kind of throughout this whole thing. So, next slide. And so the first small group discussion question we had was, how would you describe your community/Madison as it is now? There's almost 300 total responses to this. And the most common, again, non-catch-all categories were general satisfaction. So responses that were like, awesome, good, I love it, things of that nature was the top. Then general dissatisfaction, so the reverse of that, people that were saying that they don't like Madison, they find it bad, going downhill, things of that nature was second. And then third was emphasis on a support for service. So saying that they really like X department or Y department and the service they offer. Slide. And the second small group discussion question we had was then, how would you describe the Madison or your community that you want for the future? So kind of shifting from now and the present in question one to question two of the future. We again had just over 300 total responses. And the most common responses that we got were about having better service or better infrastructure. And these specifically, when broken down, were largely in the categories of better transportation or they wanted more funding to CDD programs, whether it be nonprofits or senior center, things like that. They also wanted to see an equitable future, future and accommodating for the growth that Madison is expected to experience in the future. Going to question three, was talking about what city services do you notice, value, or use the most? We tended to, tended to have people talk-- or use the most. We tended to, tended to have people talk mostly about notice and value, or notice and use. It's a bit hard to decipher when people are talking about how much they value a service, but the most common ones that they talked about were streets, talking about garbage collection, recycling collections, snow plowing, other collection efforts. Lots of responses about our parks in Madison and the general nature of the city, and our library system. Question four was talking about what services then they want people, want the Alders to prioritize as they consider their options with the budget. And this had about two hundred and fifty total responses. And here, community resources, kind of in CDD's department, these were the ones that kind of showed up the most throughout. People really wanted continued funding for nonprofits, specific nonprofits or other efforts that CDD funds. They also talked a lot about streets, once again, the collection efforts, plowing efforts, and once again, libraries as well. And then the last question that we had was, now that we had gone through all this information, that they've had these small group discussions, what they want, what they want Alders to know as they work to balance the 2025 budget. And we had two hundred and twenty-six responses here, and the most common response we got were just really general budget directives. These were things like fix it, solve the problem, just things being like, we acknowledge that there's something happening and we want you to do it, not necessarily giving a direction one way or another. Again, there is a lot of responses about the capital budget here, lots of mentions of BRT or other capital spending projects, and then there is support for cuts that showed up here as well. And so going to some key takeaways that we had, and you can go to the next one once again, Karen. And so we found that participants were really interested in learning more about a couple categories. One was the differences about the capital budget and operating budget. There's a lot of confusion, but also a lot of questions and just a yearning for wanting more. People are really interested in what we do to evaluate our effectiveness of our departments and our funding projects. People were really curious about the impacts that state law has on our budget, whether it be a sales tax or other kind of revenue efforts, and also lots of questions about staff pay, whether it be Alders or city staff. Another key takeaway we had is that general satisfaction with the city of Madison outweighs the general dissatisfaction, at least within this sample. And within that, while there was dissatisfaction, it often showed up in people wanting more or better services than what we already offer now. And then they want Alders to consider the long term as they go through 2025 budget. They want people to, Alders to evaluate capital spending, and they also want Alders to make cuts without impacting services. And so some kind of concluding considerations that we had. You can go one more, Karen. Perfect. And so kind of wrapping up this presentation of our report is that we want, you to understand that it's kind of challenging to provide any definitive conclusions from this. There's, again, response bias, human error, and challenges in categorizing this information, but there's also quite the range of information that we collected. There are many opinions that favor one stance and many that favor another stance, and they often kind of go head-to-head, as you'll notice in this report. Another conclusion that we kind of came up with is that there's significant interest but also confusion regarding the capital budget. And so there's an opportunity for additional educational material on this subject, and also that participants really leaned into this event, we found. We had a lot of people show up. They showed up from Alder districts that were hosting the event, and they really gave us a lot of information kind of across the board. And so there's a lot within this report. Again, it's long, but I hope you take the time to, to read it. And yeah, so thank you. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the body? I want to reinforce the amount of work that this was for the council office to summarize and put together. This presentation is just scratching the surface, so I actually had to read the entire report to, to help provide feedback on how to summarize the information. So it is a lot. It's a quite extensive and descriptive of the, not only of the information we collected from the public, but also the process for us to get there. So it is, I really recommend for you guys to skim through it at the minimum and then kind of start thinking about, is this something that we want to do every budget? I mean, personally, I feel that it was a good method to access people. Perhaps in future years, we can do that via Zoom version, so it's kind of easier instead of having, you know, thirty people from staff taking their time to come and volunteer with us. We can just have more targeted conversations. I think from the council perspective, it would be a great idea to continue to do that, to open that space for people to come and have conversations. I don't think the Finance Committee allows for that setting. And if you read some of the report, I think it's useful to start thinking and planning on what 2025 budget will look like for community engagement. So, thank you, Isaac and Karen and everyone that supported the, supported and organized the budget engagement process. I, you know, it was, it was a pretty hard task to accomplish in such a short time, and I think that you guys really stepped up to the game, and we, we collected a lot of data. And this data, again, if you read this information, you may, you may find yourself with questions that you may need more answers to, that you can go ahead and ask staff for if you don't know yet. You can, you're able to answer questions to other people that were answered there. Last meeting, we posted the FAQ with all the questions and answers that we collected through staff. It really is a very good resource for all of us. So hopefully, you guys will make the most out of it. So having said that, this is another informational item. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And the next item in the agenda is, if I can find you. I closed it, huh? Yeah, does it have a number? Legislator number? Eight-three-five-one-six, all the committees, you know, highly interesting topics. Anyone wants to share any of the committees that you guys are working on, any items that you want us to follow? Okay, well, I do have a couple items, of course, because, you know, why not? So Landmarks Commission met last night, and I strongly, highly recommend for you guys to go and watch that meeting. They had six-one-nine to six-ninety-nine West Mainland Street. It's an item that has been there before, so it is not new. It had gone through a few changes. The discussion was pretty interesting. It would be a good resource for you guys to get ahead of the game, especially, it's going to go to Plan Commission, Urban Design, and all of the stuff, but the conversation last night was, was good to have as a background. Item eighty-five-three-zero-eight, that's just a discussion item in the Committee of Aging that happened on nine-twenty-five. We have been getting a lot of emails about funding, the funding distribution for recommendations from, from staff for the funding for older adults. So the Gem O'Keefe also sent out a memo and a, and some presentation, but I strongly, strongly recommend for you guys to watch the video because it's way more, it's easier to follow if you watch staff's reasoning behind those recommendations. And then one development that I've been anxiously waiting for, and somehow I missed, I'm already behind, it's the Park Badger redevelopment, which is on the corner of Park Street and Hughes, I think, if I'm not mistaken, or maybe Badger Road, maybe that's what it's called. Yeah, yeah, Badger Road and Park Street. And that redevelopment is where Centro Hispano used to be, and the transfer point is all that area there. So that redevelopment contains housing for different, affordable housing, and also older senior, senior housing, as well as the police evidence, storage, and a fire, fire department, fire station. So there's a lot going on on that, on that development. And you can go to a website that the developer put together called parkbadgermadison.com to learn more about the project. And if you search the cityofmadison.com website, under, if you search for Park Badger, you can also see some news related to that. That project was at that last week, and it's already trying to start to move through the city processes. I don't have a legislator number for that yet. So those are my, my, you know, interesting ones on the, that is coming, that is, are going to be coming down the pipe and hitting us eventually. So having said that, that's all I got. And then the next item on the agenda is the Council Office update. So Karen, can you please take it? Thank you.
Yes, let me find my screen. Okay. All right, everyone. So the big thing is, we, if anyone stopped in the office lately, they've noticed all of the boxes and carts everywhere. We are moving up to the fifth floor on Thursday. We are going to be especially discombobulated on Thursday and Friday, so please give us, please forgive us for any delays. Our room number will be five-oh-five, so y'all, y'all get used to coming up to the fifth floor in order to find your things. There is a little Alder room. It's going to have some chairs and a little table and some workspaces and your mailboxes, and, and so that will be nice. Please locate your city IDs because those are the, what you'll need to get into the office starting on Thursday because with the, with the renovation, they put the door locks onto the city system. But you also need to save your county access cards because that still gets you up the, you know, down the elevator after hours and into the basement and so on. So just a heads up on that one. Just a couple staffing things. So Debbie's going to be out of the office the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, so plan ahead. If there's anything you need her to know or start working on now, go ahead and let her know that. So Larissa had to shift her vacation days due to the previous hurricane. Now, I'm crossing my fingers that she can get home okay, given this current hurricane. So if everything goes okay, she should be back by Thursday, but just understand that with the hurricane, I'm, it's possible she could be delayed. So, and then just a reminder that the executive operating budget has been released, and you can find the ninety-nine percent cost of continue budget in the normal place on the Finance website, it's linked in, the copy that I sent out to you as well. And the alternate reductions budget, and Christine Coe sent out an email as well this afternoon that you would want to look at. But the, the alternate reductions budget can be found, described in the executive summary, is where that's located. So take a look there if you want to see more about what, what is, what the alternate executive operating budget looks like. Also, Christine Coe and I will also sort of reemphasize her message, inviting you all to please come on the fourteenth to Finance if you can, to get the overview of how the two budget scenarios are going to be handled, since it's different this year. And also, it's also just a really good opportunity to hear from the agencies because they will present on what the, both what the cost of continue budget looks like and also what the cut budget looks like. So I really do recommend, if you are able, please attend the Finance discussions next week. Okay, so everyone knows we were spending all our time on the budget report and questions and so on. That is now complete. So I am excited to turn my attention to preparing for our new cohort of Alders in April, working on getting updates to the existing onboarding materials, improving them. I'm in conversations for an onboarding retreat pending funding. So we'll know for sure after November whether we'll be able to offer that. I'm very excited about it preliminarily, however, because it's got pieces for the new folks, for the returning folks, and some, some opportunities to kind of commune together as well, be in community together, and a number of other things that we're working on. So I'm very excited to get, to turn my attention to these things as well as continuing our efforts to improve processes and document processes. So that, that's kind of the, the main things. And then, you know, I know folks probably think, oh, more training opportunities. But I really want to put a plug in for some of these. There are some really good ones. We've got How to Run Effective Meetings, which I think is, is great for everyone, and Gender Inclusive Language, if you weren't able to make it to the last one, that's being offered again in October. I know there's some interest in learning more about LGBTQ plus inclusive spaces. There's going to be a training on that in October. The Value-Based Leadership, which is a great professional development for everyone, including the Alders, and it's, since it's available to you, I say it's a great opportunity to take, take advantage of that. Plain Language and Effective Communication is coming back in November, and that one I do think is also really worthwhile because I feel like, and I think I've said it before, that using plain language is actually much more complicated than it, it appears, and actually much more valuable than it perhaps people think at first glance. And so it is worth taking a little bit of time and learning more about it. The city is trying to move towards more plain language, and I think the Alders would really, that you can benefit from that in communicating with your constituents and what does that look like. And it is, I think, more challenging than it sounds. So that's my update in general. Does anyone have any questions I can answer? I'm thinking we might, by the way, I think we might be able to let you all use our break room, as long as everything goes okay. And I think there might be some coffee machines, like coffee makers in it. Yeah, I know, right? Very, it's potentially very exciting, but I have to say that it's all self-service and we're all responsibility for cleaning up after ourselves. So that's a big caveat that like, I would love you all to be able to enjoy it. I also don't want to do too much dishes, too many dishes at two in the morning after a meeting, but I am very excited about the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. I don't see any questions, but I just want to retell, just reinforce the plain language conversation as someone who is, I mean, I don't even claim to be fluent anymore in both languages, but, but has some knowledge of English and Spanish. Every time I need to translate something, it just comes up that you definitely, you have to, the simpler that you put things in English, the easier it is to translate to other languages. And that's, that's something that we should all be trying to accommodate because, again, every time we send a translation out, that's what they're looking for. And the easier it is to translate, then the easier it is for, to correct it. So sometimes we get into these big, you know, novels, and those are harder to, to translate, and then you have to go and review your own information. So, so I'm actually, if you can send that plain language information to the committee, that would be great. But yes, I think last time when we had civil rights here, that was also covered, how the importance of just not making translations of everything we say, but learn how to, how to use plain language. So I think the next item on the agenda, thank you, Karen, the next item on the agenda is items for next, for future CCCs. Yep, item seven-eight-one-twenty-five, future agenda items. Already, I don't see anything on the queue. Today at two o'clock, the mayor had a press conference for, to release the budget, so it's already on the website. This will be interesting. We have two budgets to review. So I guess good luck with that. So I guess good luck with that. With that said, yeah, you know, good luck to us. With that said, and please keep in mind the deadlines that we have for future meetings of the budget. It's going to be a tight, you know, a tight frame here. If you need help, if you don't understand something on the budget, if whatever, you can always reach out to Christine. You can reach out to Karen. We'll help you navigate any budget questions. And perhaps, you know, even using Karen or using me, where if we have repetitive questions, so we can like save Finance also some time. Please don't hesitate to do that. This is, this is going to be a tough, a tough review that we have ahead of us. So with that said, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we have a, a motion on a second. So see you guys in about an hour. So talk to you guys later. Bye-bye. Thank you.